And it grew three inches to the right. And then, and then, so I take it out just a hit and it's.
Ready?
And we're, we're close a distance from the microphone, so everyone needs to really speak up.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna put all this workshop to order. Um, just a few, you know, procedural things. Um, the first part of the workshop is going to be for the, the council here to exchange information. Jerry is gonna facilitate this because he, uh, basically has done most of the research. Um, but, but we're gonna limit the first part of the workshop to the council, you know, trying to, uh, uh, exchange some information. And then we will, um, eventually open it up for comments and input from public. And even though, you know, this is a workshop, I don't necessarily want it to just turn into, uh, a Q and A session or a shouting match or, you know, anything like that. So when, if you do wanna say something, we would ask you to raise your hand, be acknowledged, and come up to the podium and, um, you know, give us your comments. We'll probably, you know, typically in a meeting, we would limit the comments to three minutes. I guess we can be a little bit flexible on that, but, um, but we would like for you to be as, as brief and to the point as possible. And we're gonna stick to the subject. We're here to talk of short-term rentals, not about any other problem you may have with the district of the city. And, um, let's see, is that about, I guess that's about it. Yeah, I, please, please, please do not just raise your hand and then start talking from your chair because once I acknowledge somebody to be able to do that, then it just turns into a free-for-all and everybody starts shouting from their chair instead of going up to the podium.
Yeah, identify your name and where you live for the record.
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Jerry then.
I'm gonna make it stand. Good afternoon. Uh, we started looking at this several, I think, months ago now. And, uh, if you look no further than today or yesterday's, uh, Arkansas Democrat Gazette, Melvista, which was pretty close to passing an ordinance many, many weeks ago, is now, uh, that's evolved into three ordinances. Uh, they tabled it in their meeting yesterday. Fayetteville has revised it. But basically what I did, I looked at several, uh, cities around the state. Uh, also yesterday, there was a story nationwide about resort communities, which, I mean, we're not, we're not in the, uh, the population category like Steamboat Springs or, or, um, some of the ones in Colorado, but we have similar problems that, um, some people attribute to, uh, short-term rentals. So anyway, I'll just go over what I found and, uh, I think others on the council that, uh, done some research and, uh, had the, and, um, anybody just read a little bit of this. Uh, a study of several cities in Arkansas across the nation shows what municipalities are doing to address short-term rentals. Some of the concerns include impact of short-term rentals on inventory available for residents, loss of sales tax revenue, and what they consider as commercial entities, uh, ARB concerns, trash disposal, uh, uh, concerns, uh, and, and a plethora of others. Uh, so here's how some of the cities around Arkansas, including three, uh, northwest or forward, uh, Arkansas. Fayetteville, they divided their short-term rentals into type one for owners who put their primary home for rent, uh, when, when they are away, uh, and type two for dwellings that the primary use is for short-term rentals. Their, their original ordinance, uh, restricted the type two to only two percent of the residential properties, uh, in the city. Fayetteville, as long as many of the others, required business licenses and fire and code inspections before, uh, allowing the short-term rentals. They, uh, if it, if a short-term rental is, uh, operating in a, an area that is not zoned for that, uh, they require conditional use permit from the planning commission or, or property entity, um, in favor to do that. In some cities, it's resulted in fines of two hundred and fifty dollars if that is not applied. And many, if not all, the cities that I looked at imposed a hotel motel tax on vacation rentals, uh, including, uh, Silent Springs, which is grappling with the problem of how best to collect that tax. You know, if it, if it's paid to the, the, to the state or the county, how is it being backed to the, uh, to the city? We've got the unique problem that seven two six three one, uh, we don't get any of that money that goes to Eureka. Ken Mills is working on that problem now. But, uh, some of the cities have gone to third parties to help, uh, uh, collect and calculate what they should be getting. Eureka, uh, they were considering and they have passed it, I'm not sure, uh, a ban on short-term rentals of less than thirty days. Most, most of the cities are defining short-term rentals as, uh, properties that are offered for rent for less than thirty days.
This is not good, I think I should turn it off.
I should too, my bad.
Jerry, the, the short-term rentals, that does not include bread and breakfast, right?
I do not see that at first.
Because Eureka's got all kinds of bread and breakfast.
There was no distinction on that, but if it's operating as a commercial business, I would think they, they're licensing those and they're subject to the, uh, hotel motel tax. Now, I did not see, I hadn't looked at all the, the panels available in, uh...
Yeah, they, they treat them against it as a virtual business, I guess.
Well, well, I don't know why, which, uh, the rest are. They're using property, uh, many other residential areas in charge of the people to stay there. But, uh, I, I'll find out about that specifically.
Jerry, uh, did you say that, uh, Eureka Springs had banned them or was considered banned?
I think at one time they may have, but they, they pulled that off the table at the twenty-one. I mean, this, I mean, this literally is from meaning to meaning. I mean, if you read the story about Melvista, which, you know, when we first talked about this four or five months ago, they were, they were on the verge of passing one. And every time they get close, another group of protesters or concerns come up. So they've got three different ordinances.
It's my recollection from last article I wrote on Eureka Springs that they're banning new short-term rentals.
That, that's right.
Not just new ones.
They, they limit the number of conditional use permits, Jerry, that they issued.
There's a word that says from Eureka Springs, if you guys would like to have them, lines out all the exact rules of what Eureka Springs has. I only got a full copy of that. And if you want more information, I can fill you in on Eureka Springs.
We may, uh, we may invite you to be the guest speaker.
Sure.
If we're done, you just can say what we know. Are you from, uh, Ozark?
Correct.
Damon, heat.
Yeah.
Okay. Swing the workshop is on, uh, if I can be up to leave. Anyway, fire, code inspections, conditional use permits, hotel motel, vacation rentals, uh, two hundred and fifty day, two hundred and fifty dollar day fine, if not applies. Silent Springs, uh, passed the hotel motel tax, uh, to place in short-term rentals, but is one of the entities that's having trouble collecting all the failure time to, uh, Eureka. Hot Springs, uh, I did, I've done a lot of the other things, but what, this is the first one I've seen where, uh, they set occupancy capacities, uh, based on square footage and having bedrooms, uh, and also use that to determine the number of cars, of any car. They also use occupancy to determine the cost of the business license fee at fifty dollars per occupant.
Fifty dollars per occupant for what time period?
Well, I, I imagine the business license is an annual or...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, not every time.
Not every time somebody...
No, that's the cost of the first.
So if you have a place that, that takes four, it'd be two hundred dollars.
Two hundred dollars. If it takes eight, or if it takes sixteen, like one of the ones we have here in Holiday Island, it would be one of the bars, maybe four hundred and sixteen dollars.
Hey Jerry?
Huh?
Uh, how would that translate to a motel?
It's eight hundred dollars. Let's see, uh...
Hotels...
Do they apply that same thing to a motel as they do a...
Well, I think, the only one I found specifically about hotels was Fayetteville, which, uh, did not include them in their type one and type two short-term rentals. So they're handled a different way.
Yeah, I've gotta think, I gotta think that Hot Springs has so many hotels and motels that that, that fifty percent per occupant would not apply.
No.
It probably comes under a different category.
Yeah, it does in Fayetteville.
You know, that, that would be considered lodging, not short-term rental.
And then one that, uh, that somebody else talking to, uh, gathered, trying to gather some local numbers, said that, uh, that he would recommend that we include what Hot Springs does, that even though the owner, uh, may be, you know, live in California, doesn't use, uh, you know, Damon's company or others, uh, must have someone that can be on scene within a short period of time, uh, in case of an emergency. I think that's another thing. And I mentioned, uh, parking, uh, Melvista, that's, uh, got three ordinances they tabled yesterday till the next meeting. And then just some numbers that I found, none of them addressed the, the number of vacation rentals we have here on the island, uh, or Holiday Island. But, uh, industry short-term leaders, uh, VRBO and Airbnb and others keep their numbers pretty close to the best. I did talk to someone, uh, who had been in the property management desk here until, uh, a few years ago. He estimated, and, uh, you guys from the, from the management rooms, correct me, uh, when we get up to the, the rest of these, uh, he estimated that there are about fifty short-term rental product properties handled by our management. And this, this specifically doesn't address, uh, short-term rentals, but it, it, it talks about the availability, uh, or about the number of rentals in, in Holiday Island. The twenty-twenty census showed, uh, owner occupied houses versus rentals dropped from eighty-five point two to seventy-six point seven. I couldn't find anything that showed the percentage of that was because of, became short-term rentals or, uh, you know, permanent, you know, long-term rentals. And then this was the most telling, uh, thing that I found. I did just a Google search of, uh, vacation rentals in seven two six three one. They showed seven hundred and two properties available. That included properties in Shell Mahd, Eureka Springs, Beaver, Holiday Island, and Beaver Lake area. So I narrowed my search down and I picked, uh, a two-day, uh, stay in the middle of September for two adults, two children, uh, for Holiday Island by name and not a zip. And it showed me seventy-two properties, uh, again, uh, they went over to Beaver Lake, Beaver, Eureka, and only about seven, eight of them were in Holiday Island. So anyway, the number is elusive and hopefully we get some clarity from that.
One of you need it though, it could be Jim Rock landing.
But yeah, that, they didn't show up. And so, you wanna roll that one?
Yeah, just, uh, to put, what Jerry said about the percentage, um, I, I was probably playing wrong in the same database that Jerry was, but, um, in terms of, um, trying to figure out, you know, how many rental properties there are, according to the census bureau, they consider Holiday Island is having six hundred and sixty-eight housing units, thirteen hundred and four occupied and three hundred and sixty-four vacant. I don't know what their definition is of vacant, but if you look at some of the fields of backing up these numbers, the margin of error in some of those numbers was very, very high. So I think you can only use these as direction.
Well, that's, that's, that's why I, I didn't, uh, I gave up before I got to that, but that, um, it's gonna be hard to determine how many of them are short-term and how many of them, you know, that they haven't lived here, but they rented out to somebody and lived here.
Or they're simply for sale and they're living there or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very difficult to, to find good data on that. So, um, I guess just a, kind of a comment on that number dropping from, from eighty-four percent to seventy-eight percent or something like that of, of properties in Holiday Island in occupied versus vacant.
Oh, yeah. Let's see, one exactly, it's in there here.
I think it was...
Owner occupied versus rentals.
And not vacant.
It's not, it's not vacant.
Okay. Owner occupied is time. That's a different statistic, I didn't look at that, but it came out almost exactly the same.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's probably the raw data that came into the changes, you know?
From the city's perspective, um, the, you know, the, um, the more properties that transition from a permanent resident, you know, occupying that, that property to it turning into a short-term rental is that it, it directly takes revenue away from the state because the city's revenue is based on full, you know, um, um, permanent residents in, in Holiday Island. How many people in Holiday Island consider this their permanent resident? Whether they own the property or rented, if they consider it their permanent resident, residents, that is what is used by the state in determining how to prorate all of the tax money that comes back, whether it be sales tax money or, um, gas tax, road tax money or anything like that. So every property that converts over to a short-term rental is revenue out of the city funds. So that, that's one of the downsides to a community like ours, you know? If we had a, if we had a property tax-based economy or, or city budget, it wouldn't make any difference if it was long-term or short-term now. But since we don't have a property tax-based budget, it doesn't affect us.
I took a look at that yesterday, Dan, and it, in the last twelve months, a lot of turnbacks that we received for municipal aid, county sales tax, which is resident-based, uh, and highway funds, uh, calculated up to two hundred and forty dollars, two hundred and four dollars per citizen in the, in our population count, so two hundred and four per citizen. So two people in a house are, are underneath dollars.
So if that turns over to, you know, for every ten houses, we lose four thousand dollars if I, uh, I turn it over to a short-term rental. I don't know how fast houses are converting to short-term rentals or if they even, if there is even a net gain in short-term rentals, uh, permanent, uh, residents moving in here. But, um, you know, the same can be said for people that, that live in Texas or Oklahoma or Kansas or someplace and have a vacation home here. And, um, even if they don't rent their place up and they're not here, they still, um, contribute nothing towards the, the city revenue. They certainly contribute towards the, uh, the district revenue. Um, and they, you know, they pay sales tax while they're here, but, um, we don't get sales tax for, for, it's not a, they're not a full-time resident.
Can I make one more, uh, comment? Uh, mentioning the, the nationwide, uh, thing and the story that Democrat had about, uh, you see, resorts in, uh, Colorado. And we're seeing the same impact here, especially in Eureka and to some degree here in Holiday Island, of the effect on seasonal workers. They can't find rentals, uh, look no further than the farmhouse down the street, uh, who's had to curtail his hours and days because of lack of staff. I think he's even taken some of the rooms, uh, in the attached hotel or this hotel next door, uh, for staff. But that's, that was a very big issue in Colorado, uh, that, that they're addressing.
And it's not necessarily seasonal here.
No.
Anybody who wants to work in service would.
Oh, and that was another thing, I didn't write this down, but the largest employment sector in Holiday Island is the accommodations and food service industries. They're, uh, I, I, I can write the percentages down, but three hundred and twenty-eight, according to the census, deployed, uh, in accommodations and or food service industry.
That's probably because Eureka's so close to us.
Yeah.
Okay. So where do we wanna go from here?
I think several people have done some research, if you wanna go down to council and learn.
Yeah, anybody else have?
I just made, you know, those articles of the newspaper that we've been, uh, circulated some notes so that we start talking about the, the nitty-gritty of what an ordinance might look like, just the topics we need to cover. I don't have anything specific to contribute.
No, I didn't look at anything that you have already done, I just, I, the ones I looked through, the, the problem is density caps and fees and collection of fees. The mechanics of it, I'm not, I think we kinda know or have an idea of what types of things we need to do, but I don't know how we're gonna implement them, of course, them collecting, I think that may be a harder nut to crack than anything. And I don't know how to figure out density cap for an area like ours, everything's down here and, and every, every area is almost completely different, so. How it's zoning or what?
I mean, it, it, I mean, I think there's the revenue angle, but there's also the nuisance angle of the parking and, uh, trash issues. We've all heard about the property down on Lakeside where they had cars lined up down the street. I talked to one of the neighbors, uh, this morning, and he said he went over and had a, uh, heart of heart with the property owner, and he sincerely apologized. Ever since that first weekend where they had, you know, lakeside block from one end to the other, uh, the guy's been very reasonable, limits five cars to his driveway, and then they, I guess, go over to my street and talk a couple, the rest of them, I don't know. But, uh, anyway, so I think that, you know, the industry will, and I can speak for them, but just, we think that they would wanna be responsible and, and, and try to get a handle of some of these things. I used to own one right down here, one of the rental program, but I was a property, I mean, the homeowners association president, and, uh, Mr. Hinkie and I became quite acquainted, and he was very responsible every time there was a problem. He, he, he does it right. An overflow parking, they, he's got an agreement that had a permit from the Houston Park in Rodman here.
I guess my, my thought is kind of going back to square one here. You know, if, if the, if the city's gonna consider, um, regulating something, taxing something, charging fees for something, you know, we need to, you know, we need to be, we need to have a goal in my view. What are we trying to accomplish with that regulation? With, with regulating anything? You know, if, if we're trying to fix a problem, I think first we have to define the problem. I'm not sure we've done, you know, I, I'm not sure we've identified yet that Holiday Island has a problem. So, um, how, you know, how do we go about defining that? We have anecdotal, um, stories about, you know, this property has a problem, that property has had a problem, but I have to say that I'm not flooded with calls about rental, you know, short-term rental.
You've got one that just opened across the street from you. And probably, I don't know.
You can, what was that?
I don't, I don't know, but, uh, I, I would too.
I'm a big Bill.
Uh, we've got some people here that can get you some more info, I mean, it's not limited to, to just, uh, you've got the people in Woodwater, you've got somebody that lives over in Ward Three for the big, uh, problem, so, I mean, following, you can hear them.
I, I think there is a problem. You say you don't know if there is a problem. I, I say there is a problem because we, we just don't know the magnitude of it because we don't know how many of them there are. As a minimum, as a minimum, if you're, if you, you know, if you're gonna allow people to rent them, you, you have to have a buyer inspection and you have to have some kind of code enforcement, you know?
I mean, we don't have a problem, Eureka, I mean, not Eureka, but, uh, Melvista has because we've got, uh, sewer, but they're, they're requiring a, um, an inspection of sewage systems, sewage tanks to make sure that there's not gonna be a problem.
The other issue is, you said we get no revenue from these. So the, the issue there is you put a sales pass on, you get revenue. Uh, I, I think the, the main issue is just knowing where they are and what, and regulating the uses some way or another because...
I'm not saying that we don't need it, I'm just saying that...
I mean, it's like, it's kinda like the same thing we just went through on building. I mean, it's like, it's kind of like the same thing we just went through on building. It's a wild, wild west and people are doing just whatever they want to do. And you have to rely on goodwill and, you know, being responsible.
How would you determine, uh, the magnitude if you don't listen to anecdotal evidence?
Well, I mean, I, we're going to open it up for, for comment, but, um, one thing I found to be true about Holiday Island is that nobody's bashful about calling me if they have a problem. I mean, nobody, even if it's not really even a city problem. And I get very, very few calls. In fact, I don't get any calls about problems with short-term rentals. I had one person stop in the office the other day, I don't know if you were in there at the time.
Oh, yeah.
But the guy was, uh, he, he was the, he was the, the renter, short-term renter. He was here for the VW club get-together in, uh, in Eureka Springs. And he was trailering his, his VW, um, Dumba or whatever. And he pulled into the driveway of the rental unit, and the lady next door came out and read in the riot act about how he, you know, he can't park there and, and, you know, just, just gave him all kinds of heck about it and, uh, so, and, you know, he came over to, to the office to express his concern about how unfriendly Holiday Island is. It's the first time he'd ever been here, probably the last. So, that was the shoe being on the other foot. Uh, but like, like I said, I get, I get very, very few complaints about short-term rentals. That doesn't mean that it, that, that it shouldn't be regulated, but.
I mean, it, it, it may not be the magnitude of a problem that Eureka has, but if we've got anecdotal evidence in various parts of the city, that some minimum, uh, regulations, uh, which they can.
I'd say we don't have any regulation, right?
I know, I mean, I, I mean, we got to start, and a lot of these other cities have passed ordinances and amendments, things come up.
I would like to comment in the article in the Gazette yesterday, and I don't, I'm not downplaying any of the problems. I understand and I agree, but on the other hand, it does bring people to Holiday Island, which we are, have advertising out there, with people making efforts to try and bring more people here to look at Holiday Island, and that does bring them here.
Well, it brings people to Eureka Springs, and they're paying the, the hotel motel, motel tax there. And any given weekend, you drive down the, the sixty-two, and every hotel has vacant, no vacancy signs.
But I'm not advocating that we abolish it. That's been part of, of, of the history of Holiday Island is, you know, we've always had short-term rentals.
I wouldn't be here if I didn't have such a thing. Well, probably times I was learned about it. You had to come the first time?
I, I just philosophically, I think, uh, on my perspective, we have a couple, we need to regulate it, but I think we need to start with as minimal as possible. I think we've got to be very minimal. And then if there's issues, expand upon that. But I don't want to go overboard. Some of these regulations from some of the cities I read this morning, I think, they're just shooting themselves in the foot, the, the, the least amount we can get by with. I didn't say you need a business license, we need a permit or something, just. Well, we're going to have to identify first and then. Right, and that's what, that's what that does. And then if we have a fee, we're going to have to collect it, that's. I don't, I don't advocate a fee. I didn't say I didn't necessarily, I just, we have to identify, and it's not going to be that easy. There's some houses here that I've rented before and retired here, that I bet you a lot of people wouldn't know they were for rent. They look just like every other house in the neighborhood. If you're, if you're, if you're renting something out, you got to have like a fire code. Yeah, but we have, like, all that's great if we have them identified.
Let me put my two bits in before we.
Put four bits in, we're, we're two years. You got to hold off for tomorrow.
Uh, yeah, I, I think Jerry has brought up the crucial points that we need to consider. Uh, I think we need a business license. Business license is a way that you can get control of the situation. If you know, if you ensure that everyone that's operating has a license, then you know who, who you need to get money from, you know, his collection becomes less of a problem because you know who is there and who is doing that business, even if it's a small amount. It gives you the ability to know who's doing business that way.
Identify it.
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot that's going to be on the property owners.
Your next one neighbor's going to know it.
Yeah. But that, that would be minimal, a business license would be minimal.
They're advertising.
Because they're, they're, uh, many of them are operating in residential areas that are not going to be zoned for that.
Right, and I think the conditional use permit will be useful in that regard.
Again, that's minimal.
It's very minimal.
Uh, I mean, we're asking property owners, owner-occupied properties to come and get conditional use.
That helps you identify those properties that need to be inspected, that, that, uh, they're going to get complaints or calls about. You'll know who they are, they're going to be on the list someplace. You'll have better control of the situation should a problem exist. And we hope that those problems exist, but, you know, if they do come up, it's, it's bound to happen. And I think that parking is essential to control the parking issue, to control noise with a reasonable limit of some sort, you know? I mean, just like you'd control any noise in any neighborhood. Um, make sure people can go to sleep at night. Um, you need that local contact like Damon's provides. Uh, somebody that can be called in the case of an emergency. You need those inspections, the fire code, the, all that kind of stuff. And fortunately, we don't have the septic tank situation that, that, that Elvis is facing. Um, and I think you need the occupancy control because occupancy and parking are kind of tied together there, and noise, all, it kind of all kind of fit together. And so if you put some limits on occupancy, you're going to have less of the other problems. And it's only reasonable, you know? We make sure you don't have more people staying in there than you've got bedrooms. And also, the people that are renting the property have more assurance that they're going to get a fair dollar for their rental too by doing that. Um, you, you, uh, and, and controlling and holding them responsible for a business license, um, you know, it also controls the problem, but it also allows us to reasonably have the opportunity of having these rentals available in Holiday Island. And if, and people are going to be more accepting of them if we're doing some reasonable level of control to make sure that they're not disturbed by those people that are spending the weekend next door to them that they don't know. You know, people are fearful. I know I've heard my friends talk about, geez, you know, if the house next door goes to a short-term rental, I don't know who's going to be staying next door to them. It's kind of scary with some elderly people. Uh, but, you know, if you've got a local contact that can call if you're, if something happens and, um, you know, the sheriff's office knows that that's a short-term rental or something, it, it'll help us all. Anyway, that's my thoughts.
Nice, I'll follow up. At the end of our list was talking about taxes and the collection of motel. Uh, it says, and I'm reading the statute twenty-six seventy-five six oh five. The municipality lev, levying a tax pursuant to this subchapter shall create an ordinance, a municipal advert, advertising and promotion commission. The commission has to have seven members. Four of them shall be owners and managers in the tour, tourism industry, and shall reside in the city or within the county. At least three of them must be managers of hotels, motels, and restaurants. I don't think we have enough people in our community to meet that requirement.
That's true.
So we can't even have a commission, so we can't charge a fee or a tax. We can't charge taxes.
Where are they supposed to be at?
In our city or by a separate ordinance within the county.
Damon's in, Damon's in Eureka.
Okay, we have to have four, plus three, that shall be owners or managers of hotels, motels, or restaurants. So you have to own rental property, and then you have to be in the hood industry. Seven people to meet the requirement of the statute, you have a commission so you can collect a tax.
I got something to add for that one, you didn't do it.
Well, I think it'd be difficult to form a commission.
It may be time to let the president expert, uh, give us, Damon, you want to? Give us some insight or just?
You got all the pieces, you've just got to get them up there. What's it going over to?
Yes, sorry, I'm a camera force.
Yeah, sure, sure. Uh, just since it's a nice segue, we'll stick with exactly what we're talking about. I've been a C A B C commissioner in Eureka, I know some of the mechanics of that. But the glorious tax that will happen there has some limitations, and that is, you can only spend it on advertising, or you can literally build a resort with it. But for Holiday Island to have a three percent tax and gain it from this, basically all you can do is advertise to bring more people here to stay in short-term rentals that everybody's questioning, maybe we have too many of them first place. So I don't know that you're getting ahead where you want to go with your, because it's totally geared toward tourism. I think it would be great, but maybe exacerbating the problem rather than solving it, collecting the, the, the three percent there. Uh, but certainly something that you should take advantage of because you, to your point, you already have an advertising program to be, bring people to Holiday Island. I think that's part of an identity crisis for Holiday Island. Which direction are we going here, and how much money can we assimilate from these people who aren't in Holiday Island? Because it's certainly something that you need to take advantage of.
But Damon, a lot of that is, uh, paid for by, uh, donations to Ha Ha and High Pro. Uh, you're high, sir Bob, you're limited to what you can spend on.
Yeah, we, we spend thirty-five, forty thousand dollars a year.
I would say that you could replace that money off of the three percent. I think it's a great idea, and that's why you should probably replace that money, so that you can use it out of the pool. But I just didn't want you to think, it's the same problem that Eureka runs into is we have infrastructure needs, and there's a big pile of money there, but that pile of money has to be to bring more people. And now as you, your sales tax issue is the issue because with Eureka, we bring more people, they pay more sales tax, there's more infrastructure money there to put into water, sewer, whatever you need. But if you don't have that mechanism, I think it's a quarter percent of a pool of all city residents are sales taxed, that becomes problematic. Sure, you can build that up, but you're also helping every other city that doesn't have sales tax. So I don't know what the hurdle is across the sales tax piece. That's definitely something that would help. Uh, the, the things I wrote down as you're talking, uh, you got a, a couple of definition issues. One is vacation rental, uh, and a vacation rental isn't actually a commercial entity. It's viewed based on, uh, legal cases that that's residential use as a, as a vacation rental. Because what they say in the court cases is that people are coming and going and using the property as though it were residential use. You don't have actual commerce of people driving up, spending money, entering that residence for any reason other than to go there, eat, sleep, and leave just like any other residence. That's still in debate based, uh, really on a nationwide level of what the definition of that is because where this plays into is a lot of covenants in residential areas that say you have a commercial use. Vacation rentals can get around that because it's not actually commercial use. Uh, the other part that I think you're going to want to define, and this comes back to your business license, certificate of occupancy, zoning, uh, you need to get the, the zone set correctly, and then you got to identify your, your types. Uh, the two predominant types in, uh, Eureka are going to be what everybody calls Airbnb rentals, but that's actually a whole-home rental, and legally it's specified as tourist lodging in Eureka. Tourist lodging is a whole home, there's nobody there to watch people come and go. Those are basically grandfathered in. The ordinances I gave you actually, uh, go back to two thousand. Everybody thinks that this is new regulation in Eureka Springs. In two thousand, what the problem was, was the bed and breakfasts, this is pre-internet. Bed and breakfasts basically were doing well, and they were like, hey, I want to buy the house next door to me, and we can expand and have four more units. So they were buying a house, and then they were on the next one. And just like you guys, eventually sent out a ticket, we're like, we may have a problem in a residential area that's here, they're all turning into bed and breakfasts. So what they did was because they already had a conditional, conditional use permit policy, they basically did a moratorium in two thousand on tourist lodging in R one zone. That controlled anybody just taking a residential unit and applying it into a rental, unmonitored rental situation. So they saw this coming long before Airbnb ever got here because it's such a tourist group in town. And that's really where I think you guys would need to understand. If somebody has an Airbnb, it's their primary residence. This is really what I used to preach for Eureka too, because a second home issue is an issue for both communities. If you have a second home and it's not their primary residence, nobody's making any money. The restaurant's not making any money except for three times a year when they come and stay. But if that actually became, this is really pre-residential values of where we are today, but maybe it still applies because for somebody to be able to afford some of these houses, if they want to make it their primary residence, I would say have a bed and breakfast type lighting or just a different lodging label that identifies that that's a primary residence renting out. That's not your problem. That allows a younger couple to be able to purchase that house and consider the basic control. It's part of their way to afford a Holiday Island to the place in the world. So you really want to. You want old storage, old food, you don't want to spend like rentals that are typically called Airbnb's, and then your true bed, bed and breakfast type rental.
Are you aware of those bed and rentals?
Only in the sense that they live there, and for instance, Island Cottage, she lives in one side of the duplex and rents out the other side. So you've always got someone at that particular unit to take care of the issues. And I think you have a lot of connectivity like that. You're not calling those, I mean, I'm calling bed and breakfasts as an identifier, but you really would consider that, I didn't use to have a name for it, like a, uh, an onsite property owner with a rental or an, or a long-term renter.
Well, our zone takes care of that, owner occupied on one side, tenant on the other, in duplexes.
We define bed and breakfast as the, the owner living in the, in the, in the structure in the building and renting a part of it. Got the traditional, what everybody thinks of when they think of bed, bed and breakfast, where you rent a, a bedroom and a bathroom, and you have some nice lady make banana bread for you in the morning. But I don't think there are very many of those actually around anymore, a true, you know, B and B.
Owner-occupied lodging is what I would say, since they're not actually making breakfast. But if you already have that as a designation, that's typically not what a city is worried about because somebody is there monitoring parking, noise levels, whatever else. It's the actual whole home. So if you say this is going to be proposed as a whole home, you are nailing it with the business license thing. You apply for a certificate of occupancy, you go and then get the business license. Somebody has come out and inspected, there's a fire extinguisher, the numbers are on the door. I can tell you what Bobby Ray looks for because I do it all day long. There's a carbon monoxide detector, a smoke alarm, all the pieces are there for safety. And then also in that same ordinance, they would need to say this is going to be the sleeping capacity of this home. What is your parking situation? If they have fifteen, if they live in the back of a, a place that has an acre worth of parking, you can have fifteen bedrooms and sleep forty-five. It's not a problem in this particular place, but otherwise, uh, if you only have two bedrooms and you put five sets of bunk beds in this house, that's going to be a problem with your parking, and you're going to overpower a lot of that. So that should be in the stipulations as it goes to planning, and they apply for the permit, they would say, no, you're not going to be permitted on a conditional use permit. Now, if it's in a commercial area, you're from, I'm assuming that you wouldn't buy it, you would just go and get the business license, but you'd still have to do a certificate of occupancy. You have to iron all of that out, uh, just as you said, that, you know, you needed. Um, and then I, the zoning is going to be a critical piece of that because that was part of the same thing, because you're going to want, you have R one, R two, R three, which.
We're about to, we've, we've passed an opening ordinance on the first reading, but it's going to take two more readings, but we're within a month or so having those opening ordinance like that.
Yeah, I think that, that also comes into play where there's, you, you can curtail it as much as you want in R one, that's how Eureka Springs works. And basically, as I, as you read through the first ordinance, that was their shutting off of whole-home rentals in R one in two thousand. And when everybody came back around and said, oh, there's two hundred and seventy-five illegal bed and breakfasts in the city of Eureka Springs. There were, it gets back to the zip code thing. If you go out to Air DNA, which is predominantly where people are getting the information, in seven-two-six-three-two, there's that many rentals, but they're not in the city limits operating illegally. They're around in the Eureka Springs zip code. And it gets back to what, you know, how do you identify them? We all know each other, it's competitive in Eureka Springs. It's competitive in Eureka Springs, not in the sense of capitalism, but just in the sense of, if I have to go jump through the hoops, you certainly have to go jump through the hoops. And it's easy that everybody knows what everybody's house looks like, and it's really gonna be that way in this community, too. I go to Airbnb and tell you where most of the houses are, probably in Holiday Island by sight of the pictures. Because over the course of ten years, I've been in all the houses that were for sale, and driven by them, and seen them for rentals, et cetera. So most of this, and if you tell all the operators to say, hey, let us know if anybody, we need to get everybody legal. I think you just pose it as a safety concern. Everybody needs a certificate of occupancy, everybody needs a license. The licensing will give you some income there. By the way, you can identify them off Airbnb. As we find these people aren't coming in, then we call them and send them a message on Airbnb. Hey, we noticed, we think that maybe you're operating without a license. We just need you to come get a business license. We're trying to grandfather everybody in, get our arms around the situation. Nobody's gonna be told that they can't do this. You have to meet the legitimate requirements of safety, but we'll get our answer on it. Then anybody new coming in just goes into the office, fills out the application, you process them through planning. They get a conditional use permit based on the fact, the way it works in Eureka is you have a two-hundred-foot rule. So they have to go and send out a notification, you have to obviously put it in the paper of record so that everybody knows what you're doing, and then there's a hearing. And at that hearing, the neighbors who are within two hundred foot have all received a registered letter that says, Damon Hinkie's buying this house and turning it into a vacation rental. They can come to meetings, Damon, here, just like I am, and say, well, here's the problem. That house that Damon bought has, is at the end of a one-lane road, crammed next to two other people, and he's only got one parking spot, and it's gonna be a fifteen-bed lodging. This is not gonna work, and that allows the planning to be like, here's the deal, Damon. Well, we'll give you a conditional use permit for one bedroom, or not at all, or whatever can happen there. So I think all, that's all on the right track. I don't think you'll have any trouble pushing that. We certainly won't with my owners, because we'll just meet whoever the inspector is, get, make sure we're legal. We don't really have any big ones sleeps at normal, abnormal capacity in Holiday Island. I don't know that there are. I've heard that there's a couple of big ones back when we were talking about the pool usage. But for the most part, I think everybody's got the right amount of beds and the right amount of bedrooms. And we can, just like Jerry was saying about the parking, I think if you have enough parking in Holiday Island that people needed to use some additional, or a parking, that problem is solvable in Holiday Island. Whereas in Eureka Springs, parking's a gigantic issue. You just, there's no way to do it at all.
It's not very solvable here, because the streets, we don't have streets, we have roads. True, two-lane roads. And if somebody parks on the road, it's, you, you have, they have one-lane block, and you have to drive around them. So if people park on both sides of the road, then, you know, basically, they have a fire lane issue. You would never be able to, a emergency vehicle down that, down that road. So if you can't park in the driveway, we don't have any, there's a one single public parking lot in Holiday Island. There's high sits, parking lot by the rec center, and golf doors and stuff. They're not going to let, you know, vacation rental people park them full and shuttle their people to the house or anything, so. It's, now, it looks wide open here, but when it comes to finding a place to park a pickup truck and boat trailer,
Yeah.
Damon, you mentioned a number of beds, the right number of beds for room. Are there Arkansas statutes that dictate occupancy, that you're aware of?
It gets into this slippery slope, but it's not actually commercial, therefore it's residential, therefore there's not actual requirements. I didn't have to get to a fire inspector, I'm best.
What do you mean, the roof?
I've never run into that, that's all I can.
The roof is twelve square, it has a closet in the window, so it qualifies to be a bedroom. Can you put five bunk beds in it?
Yeah, and the answer is, as far as I know, you can. I haven't seen anybody do that. But it gets into the factor of there's nobody really out there to regulate it. It's, I've always said that about long-term rentals in Eureka, they don't require a license or an inspection or anything else. So they said, well, it has to meet these certain criteria, but there's no application or license to do it. So I don't know who is ever gonna meet that criteria, which is kinda like. The only other thing I was gonna say, which I wanted to mention, I think a lot of the things that become short-term rentals are second homes. The reason I've gotten into short-term rentals is because they're not used on a regular basis. So those aren't typically primary residences, so I don't think you're gonna lose the fact that everybody did a short-term rental. You lose the income of having an actual residence here. I don't know what the percentages are, because I would think that that would be relatively low, because most of the time, it's a secondary residence that's either sold. It, it, it wouldn't be an Atlas Rattles, because a lot of those, and I think that might have been your vacant number that you were talking about earlier, is they're not actually vacant, they're just second homes, and they don't serve as a primary residence, and nobody to have. And that was a big problem in Eureka Springs. But I always used to voice this, at least if you have someone using that home as a vacation home, you have some regular activity, the restaurants are used, you have an ability to have some economic gain from that house. I don't think that you're just having an economic loss, because where you have a true economic loss is a second home, where they only come once a year, and they're here for a week, and then they're gone, and that's not even their primary residence. Nobody's getting any from that situation. Any questions that you have?
I'm gonna comment. So I've had the question, how does Eureka collect the tax? And how do they be sure that everyone that should be is collecting lodging tax?
So in recent years, Airbnb collects the tax on their own, and Verbo, E R B O, will collect the tax for those who aren't integrated accounts. I'm, this is maybe more technical than me, but I'm an integrated account, so I actually collect the tax on my own and remitted to the state and the city for Verbo. But Airbnb collects it a hundred percent for us, for Fayetteville. So if they're on their site and they have a listing, Airbnb is already collecting the tax and writing you a check. The interesting thing about what Airbnb does is they don't itemize that and say, you know, Forty-two Hillside sent you this amount of tax dollars. You're gonna get one lump sum that says everything in this area, because I've actually identified, like lately, certain, it's not in the city limits of Eureka Springs. But they do collect the Eureka Springs tax on those bookings, because I've seen people who have stayed there. I've saw, I've seen their invoices, and the taxes on there. So they're submitting that to Eureka, but it's not, the same thing will happen here, so they'll guess at the borders.
Fact or fiction, you're, you're collecting from your properties here tax on rentals here?
No, you would have not Eureka Springs tax, just state tax. But Airbnb collects the rentals, so I don't pay any Airbnb sales tax. They're doing it a hundred percent. There is a benefit to the state. Now, the question would be, probably not this far out, but it wouldn't shock me necessarily, if there's something that's on the fringe of Holiday Island, we would just have to go. The only way you know is to book a room, whether you receive, and see if there's a.
Well, I mean, that, that may or might, might not be misconception, is that, that, that money is going to the state earmarked for quickly in that consumer.
On the state tax level?
Yeah.
You would have to get into the guts of Airbnb to see if they have those aligned correctly. Because, yeah, I don't know, they're not telling us, they're just collecting it and assigning it correctly. So the other real question is, do they have the delineation for Eureka Springs versus here on the taxes? That was what I had.
So if their tax is collected by the Airbnb, do they have to have a sales tax permit or not? Is that just all taken care of by the listing agency?
If you're gonna take zero reservations on your own, basically, there's no requirement to go out there and do it. If you're gonna take your own reservations, then you're gonna need the sales tax permit, because if you take any money on your own, you're still gonna have to collect the sales tax on them. And I would say that the state, the right legal interest that you need the sales tax permit, and you have to fill it out with zero and send it in and say, remitted by Airbnb, so that they know you're a legitimate.
See, that's what Silent Springs is grappling with, you know, whether to go through a third party, do it themselves, or how to tack into that, that they don't know about.
So could we require a sales tax permit be submitted or a copy along with an application for a business license?
I don't know. They don't do that in Eureka. I'm not sure.
I think then we would know the least thing we could ask for. We would have to file a sales tax return periodically.
The question would be, how many rentals do you have in Holiday Island that aren't using Airbnb or Verbo for that matter? There's doubt being nearly zero. If you're not using Verbo or Airbnb, you're not in the right real business, yeah.
How can you determine that, Damon? Because I, I mentioned that I did just a little test to see, and I got, you know, properties all over, hell and a half acres, to where I knew that it was a Holiday Island. Does it give me everything, or is it because I asked for something to fit two adults, two children? Did it not give me the five bedrooms?
And there's two settings in Airbnb. One says exact location, and one says general location. And they're doing that basically because if somebody does up one, another person know effectively where the house is, you can make more use of Airbnb. I would say here, most people are just using the actual location. So this is how we do it, is just zoom in on Airbnb, don't put any dates in, show availability, and all those rentals are gonna show up pretty much at that. It's gonna be within a block or two of where that property is, and just go through and write. And that's gonna give you a general account. It's not gonna tell you the address. But again, you can actually communicate back through Airbnb to the owner and say, hey, this is, you know, the city council requesting your input, and we'd like to know the actual address of this house, et cetera. And they're not, so I think if everybody knows, all we're trying to do is get our arms around this, then nobody's gonna really be objected to it. And everybody's just worried that, oh, my gosh, I just made an investment in a house, it's a night rental, I need the income from that. And not to take off on another path. But Holiday Island has an unbelievable amount of vacation rental inventory now. We had in the area an unbelievable amount of travel in twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and I would say up until July of twenty-twenty-two. This August is the first August that I've seen where we're back to actual rental patterns, meaning kids are going back to school, life is back to the old pattern that we know it. And there's owner after owner calling me, and being like, hey, we don't have reservations going forward. What's the deal? And the answer is, we're back to just kind of the summertime in Holiday Island, and people are gonna go and live their life, and you're gonna have a splash of, of fall travel, because they wanna see the colors. But then, as you get into December, the, the travel is just gonna be lower than what it is. I'm already losing clients based on the fact that they're moving back to long-term rentals, because long-term rentals are at twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollars a month, and that's way bigger than zero or one rental.
Well, that, that kind of is a little bit of, you know, the reason why I said we need to start off by defining whether or not we have a problem. It's kind of in the back of my mind, I think, that there's gonna be a saturation point. And that, yeah, we're, we don't want, we don't want, you know, most of our houses in Holiday Island being short-term rentals. I don't think they'll ever get there. There'll be a natural saturation point. I don't know, I don't know where that is. I don't know if that's two hundred units, or five hundred units, or whatever it is.
But couldn't a guy just snap his fingers and say, okay, I'm, I'm not a short-term rental anymore?
Yeah, it's happened this month.
Yeah, I mean.
As long as there's not.
It's not gonna deter anybody.
Well, but, yeah, well, I'm not talking about necessarily deterring anybody. I'm just talking about what, what is the problem that we're trying to, to, to solve by regulating?
I think you're right on track, and everything is a pendulum swing economically. And what you've seen is a flood of government printing money, that money winding up in real estate, the pendulum swinging far out, and everybody thinking that short-term rentals are a great investment. They are a great investment as long as your tourism numbers hold up to the high demand. But as those tourism numbers drop or claim out, I think you start to see, it's, the question is, are we at capacity or aren't we? If we aren't, then we better start doing something, because everything's turned into short-term rental, because there's some type of margin on there. I, in my opinion, we've swung out to the place where you're gonna start seeing a lack of returns. And as those lack of returns happen, the next return off of a house you bought as an investment property is gonna be a long-term rental. And right now, you can pull out a nice fat rate out of a long-term rental. And usually, higher rates give you a decent rent or most of them.
I'm still getting calls from people, you know, once or twice a week, that are looking at buying something in Holiday Island, specifically because as investment property for short-term rentals. I had a call yesterday from a retired policeman in Omaha, Nebraska, that is thinking about doing that. But to me, it's, it's maybe almost as likely. On, on one, on one side of the ledger, you have the potential for, you know, too many properties converting over to short-term rental. To me, on the other side of the ledger is, we're only one good recession away from a couple hundred houses being on the market in Holiday Island, because they were all purchased for short-term rentals. And in the recession, nobody's, nobody's going anywhere. And now, all of a sudden, our real estate values tank, because the market's flooded with all these houses. So to me, that's maybe just as good a reason to limit the number, the total number of short-term rentals, so that in a down market, you only end up with all these properties being, well, for sale.
Well, yeah, you're in a crystal, it's crystal ball territory there, so you couldn't, you really can't plan a community based on the fact that you're gonna have a recession. I mean, sure, you've seen many of them, so.
And the, I mean, you need to, yeah, I mean, people, a lot of the problems with the, with recessions is the fact that nobody did plan for it.
Right, the problem.
You know, the housing bubble's never gonna burst, but then when it does, the whole country's in the toilet for a long time. Well, if somebody would have planned a little better, maybe the bubble wouldn't have got too big.
Summary wise, I think I would just say, I don't remember for those ordinances, I'm sure you've been copies, but I think Eureka saw what was coming. You can kind of just base it off of that conditional use permit slash zoning situation with your planning commission. There's also an appeal situation in Eureka, so if you don't get approved by planning, you appeal to the city council. My house specifically in Eureka, I have two bed and breakfast units, so to speak, because they had exterior injuries, bathrooms were located where people can come and go. Planning didn't approve that. I did override it with city council. But I've also been to the table in a little cabin in the residential area in Eureka that actually was perfect for, it's set by itself, it wouldn't bother some, but the road was just narrow, and they were concerned with people getting on the driveway, so they turned it down, and I filled the city council. And they also turned it down, so I think it's a good management tool. I don't, I think the news and media has perpetuated Eureka's problem as more of a problem than it actually was, because honestly, I would like to wave the flag for Eureka and say, for once, Eureka had something figured out before it became a problem, and actually had good controls with the moratorium in 2000, and expanding that moratorium in 2001 on whole-home lodging in R1. And then also having the planning commission make good decisions, notify neighbors via registered mail, and then a, a safety net for a city council to make the, make the actual final call. So it just sounds like you have the pieces of the program. I don't mind working with you to identify who the operators are. I think we could get, I don't know what your city inspector's availability is. That's gonna be a heck of a lot of certificates of occupancy to get through, to get the licensing alters through. But if you're talking about by the end of the twenty-twenty-three, that's certainly a billable, billable time, and you can take control. Over, at least you would know what the number of vacation rentals are in the community. And I think, I don't remember, I believe I talked to your director, because it's, not to bring up a different, but it's interlinked, and that is the pool usage, like how many vacation rental guests are actually using pool versus guests of homeowners, and what's the real impact there? Because I would like to see an ability for me to at least get my guests to contribute more toward that pool. Did I wanna pay the six hundred dollars, and did I authorize my owners to pay it? I said, no, I don't think it was the right setup. But I think we're all saying, this being a resort community, advertising it as a resort community, using state money to advertise that, and having the right number of rentals that are safe and verified by the city, is definitely, I would have pushback on that.
Does Eureka, one last question. Does Eureka take into consideration density of the rental properties? Like, you can only have one every twenty houses or something like that?
It's, yeah, basically, I think the two-hundred-foot rule already hit me out of school a little bit, but if I can pull my memory bank, I believe once there's a vacation rental slash bed and breakfast within two-hundred-foot of a building, that's not grandfathered in in that situation. within two hundred foot of a building, that's not grandfathered in in that situation. Like for instance, everything that exists now, if you have like Green Meadow that Jerry used to be in, that's a hundred percent vacation rental now. Obviously, they're within two hundred foot. Those condo situations would be something that you'd want to make an exception for. But in a true R one market that had full homes, you basically say, if your next door neighbor is already one and the houses on either side aren't eligible, it's back to the condition, the condition use permit. But it is limited in the actual verbiage for Eureka Springs that you can't just pile one right next to the other. And and just to elaborate, where this goes in Eureka is now into the the commercial area because everybody's saying, oh, we lost all our long term rentals into commercial area. Because the 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 problem is, commercial districts are designed for highest use for economic purposes to pull the most money in for that use to have the most tax base. The highest use for those downtown apartments that are above shops that used to be long term places became vacation rental because there's way more money in that. So obviously, those flipped and now there's no place for all the employees to to. And it's the same thing in this Steve O Springs. Colorado has been dealing with this, and honestly, we have too, since twenty seventeen as the economy ticked up. That's really the start of this. The pandemic just amplified it by ten times all of a sudden. But as you lose uh that ability to house your frontline service staff, obviously, it's different for Holiday Island. And there are some examples here of powers that does have limitations of being able to hire somebody, sure. But that's exacerbated in Eureka because your commercial districts are all turning into basically short term rentals. But it's by design because your commercial districts are designed to pull in as much money as they possibly can first word for the that particular inner space. So it's a difficult situation to monitor that.
And here, you know, the, I would have to say that if there are complaints that we have had recently have to a large degree, I think been in the in the real high density areas like across this creek over here. It's all condos. So it's already very dense, uh, pop, you know, dense housing. And now you turn, you know, thirty percent of those condos into BRBOs. And, uh, you know, it's just not designed to handle that kind of traffic where there's multiple um houses having multiple vehicles pulling boat trailers up and down the street, you know, on the weekends and stuff like that. So it, um, had we had ordinances, maybe we would have only allowed two maximum in that area or something just because it's the 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 population density there.
Yeah, that makes sense. Uh, something that came to mind while you were talking about that and the density and what you're talking about for identification. You're probably going to want a public site where you can list, these are all the houses that are actually registered and licensed to do business. That way, those who are in the tight spot, they're like, everybody keeps coming in, no one out of unit number six. They can look on there and be like, well, it's because they're registered as it. But if they're not, that's kind of how are you going to get people to submit it? Then get them on the radar and be like, it's number six, needs to get their license and needs to submit tax. Whenever you get zero tax, I guess that's the answer is we do submit for everything that Airbnb collects all the tax for the city C A T C, once you get the city advertising promotion. We've got a form that says zero, all Airbnb, and we submit it in. So they know that we're collecting the tax on a city basis.
We have some properties in Holiday Island with vehicles coming and going all the time.
To different.
I think that's hard to do with Cameron Street.
We forgot, somebody said she's coming up on the top.
Thank you, thank you for agreeing with me to address in a market. Keep in touch.
I won't be on your committee for for that if you if you need it. Because I think we've got a great example in Eureka with a ton of history and lots of problems and lots of resolved problems only because they happened to do it for the last twenty two years since really pre that. It was the late eighties that that started building up and they operated, so a good industry there. I enjoyed it.
I can hear people here.
Damon?
No.
Oh.
So you're saying if you if you book your house on Airbnb, they collect the tax?
They collect the tax.
But if the house is in Holiday Island, they shouldn't really be collecting the tax. So would that be an advantage to the house owner to make them stop collecting the tax? Give them a half, you know, they're rent, they're rental. Either their rent will go up to a half percent or they get more business because their rent is less than Eureka's.
So the owner doesn't see the money at all. So I only see.
He sees the tax bill.
I don't see the tax bill either. Only the person booking the room sees the actual taxes. So let's just say I've got a unit down here in Green Meadow. It gets rented through Airbnb. That person sees, I'm not even saying that this exists because I don't know. But if that tax was fourteen point three seven five rather than nine percent, then that's some taxes for Eureka going into Eureka's coffers that nobody would know about other than the guest. And the guest wouldn't say anything because they just assume that the taxes are correct. Now, I don't know if that problem, that's not really a city council's problem. That's more of a Eureka is gaining. I happen to live there, so I'm not going to raise the flag. But I think that in Airbnb, you can go and sort that out by detail on your own account and say specifically, these are the taxes that apply to me. It doesn't say to you to add these, uh, but that's a very recent thing that they've obviously come to the conclusion that they don't know all the borders out there. Uh, so they're they're still sorting that out.
Do you have any feedback on what happens if, say, you're in a neighborhood, not that many were derailing it all, but a normal, hollow balance neighborhood and and the one house actually linked to the Airbnb? What happens to the value of your house?
Boy, that's just a really difficult situation to say. I mean, I could really answer that both ways. On the other side, because if that's a successful Airbnb situation, you now monetize that homeownership and you can prove that your house theoretically is worth twice the amount that it was because there's cash flows tied to that situation. The other side is if you're a residential person looking to rent, they're going to be like, oh, there's an Airbnb next door. I definitely don't want that one. So I.
Yeah, who comes here?
It really depends on who your buyer is.
I think that makes it even more important to have some sensible regulations in place.
Yes, that's my point.
Fred, you want to take the podium and elaborate in this situation?
Yeah, we just, Fred, I'll just go a little over on, uh, Del Air. Our our neighborhood, we we've got several now that I understand that look at, or there's one houses and those were performed. There's one in particular that's pretty noisy over the weekends. I'm a, you know, for one night or something like that, hear the noise, they're gone. I'm not going to call you about it because it just makes me mad. But we're worried about the density in the neighborhood. And then, uh, how many cars? All the things that Jerry's already said. And then in the off season, who's going to take care of the house? That's another thing that you ought to think about it in more. But we 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 need an ordinance, even though there may not be a big problem yet. But you already know in other areas are having problems. So you need to think about, let's have a common sense when we start with it. I don't like to think of really the visit, is the density of the cars, the noise, the value of the homes?
Is there a trash issue?
I I haven't seen any yet. Uh, the, I think they cleaned up pretty good over on, uh, when they're gone. But when we moved here, I've been here twenty years now, and we knew everybody. The neighborhood, it was all retired people. And I really hate to see that change so much. I know it will in certain circumstances. I think the zoning situation where you have, if you have one or two in a neighborhood a few blocks, fine. But you don't want four, five, six, eight.
Yeah, not on the same street. That's, you know. That's my.
And and right now, if you don't have an ordinance, how you stop it?
Fred?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, it seems like a good thing that you would want in this situation when you notice a few issues around you is to have somebody like Damon you could call.
Yes.
And say, hey, this is going on over there. Could you maybe speak to them or?
Oh, this is like the Fourth of July, the fireworks happened going on. I mean, that was a lot of rental people and there were fireworks all over the dog course and it was the next.
What's the address, Damon, maybe?
No, that's not what I'm like. But that was a problem. And, uh, and everybody's got, it was dry, you know, everybody was on fire.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
I know the rental.
We don't even allow them in normal terms either.
That's the kind of thing that when you do it, that's the common sense thing.
That's Bob. Is that too long?
I know, it feels like I'm not going to be able to get up.
Bob Digger, two Indian models. And I I live fairly close to Fred, so, um, number one, I'm going to applaud you all for even talking about this. Two and a half years ago, I wrote a paper that was on social media. And in that paper, I said, these short term rentals are our largest industry. And how they are far and away the largest industry. And going into the future, they may always be the largest industry unless Costco goes ahead and builds that new store that we're talking about.
Are you letting something out there? Are you divulging something?
We got some type of bans in this though.
But it is important to have these conversations. I, we can help you, I said, with identifying a lot of these because we did have a problem with them. And it, you know, in the past, we issued tickets or vouchers, I guess, to BRBO and Airbnb owners to use the swimming pool. That's a, that's a free amenity for them to advertise, to bring business. And long the whole way, pretty much inundated our swimming pools. Last year, we we gave out, I think, sixty one, if I recall correctly, sixty one of those vouchers that, uh, renters could use to access the pool, they had to pay as well. But because of the problems last year, you know, abs and diapers and all, you know, it was, there was a mess. Uh, we instigated this year a six hundred dollar fee, which a lot of the, you know, short term round people thought was not that bad. You know, when they have a try set out over all the rentals that they're going to have during the year. Uh, I don't know what the final number of those, I I know it decreased the number of permits sold. But, you know, we can help you uh get your arms around at least some of these people. I, my my layman's guess would be that there's at least a hundred. And I know in the last year, a lot of homes, when when property was just selling in twenty four hours, a lot of those homes were bought up specifically to be used as as short term rentals. The one that kind of between Fred and I, uh, we're real lucky there. You know, they bought this house two doors from me and it has not been a problem. It has not been a problem. Uh, the, uh, he's a local owner, which is kind of unique because you can have more problems when you have owners that are in Denver, Colorado or Los Angeles, California. Uh, they better have a local manager to take care of the property. And in the case of the one by us, uh, the Plumleys, uh, do a lot of this interlocally. And Michael, I know, Michael Plumley went around to all my neighbors, including me, and it was his information, his contact information, his phone number. He said, if there's ever a problem at that house, he said, I don't care if it's two o'clock in the morning, you call. And, you know, that's the kind of of oversight that is going to make this, uh, you know, tolerable to people. Uh, but I think the the important thing, and I'll end on this, is to find out who they are. License them and inspect them. Down the road, you can think about taxing them. But number one, we need to license them to protect the city, to protect the rentals and to protect the property. Thank you.
And you know, we'd like to make that a pleasurable experience for those people living.
Most definitely.
Encourage them to be here one day.
Like that said, you know, when Mary and I came here, we stayed for a week at the at the land. That's what brought us here.
I think most of us did.
And we walked around here, we thought, dang, we'd like this guy. But maybe we're going to buy a house.
We rented several people who moved here, otherwise we probably wouldn't have.
Yeah, and and that that will happen. You know, we we want to encourage that. And and if the short term rental business grows, as long as it's controlled and managed. But over here across the street, I went over there after one of your council meetings when we had several people who had talked about the problem. I went over there with them. They do have a problem and somehow we need to help them and make sure that that problem doesn't carry on to other neighborhoods.
Can anybody ever put the one way sign back up?
Yeah.
It is up.
It is up.
I don't know who put it up. I assume the ropes are up there.
Everything, everything's saying, I'm agreeing with it. Reason for the ordinance and to get ahead of any problem. Like I was thinking, and then I lost the thought. Um, one of the, one of the reasons in my mind we incorporated to start with is because the SIP, even though we had ordinances, didn't have the legal, what it would force me to have. Now we're incorporated. So it's important that we have ordinances that are clear, common sense, but we can enforce them.
So were you and Bob talking about the same property or there are two that they?
Uh, no, I I believe there's a couple up the road, up around the corner, on Marion Lane.
The one I was talking about is like.
Yeah, I know which one you're looking for me.
So that's two pretty combined.
There may be three. Uh, this is a no on the corner that I heard. But I don't know. But there's one that gets noisy on on, but other than, some people live there.
I think we got a chance to get it, the end of the game this time. So it has become a real problem. That's what people want.
Hi, I'm Betty Luna, across the street, the mess, the number two blue water circle. Yes, it is.
The mess.
So yes, I think the steps about requiring them to be registered, that's the least that we can do. But I think that's an important part. I think we need to identify what we've got really going on. Because unfortunately, my neighborhood is owned commercial. There's just no way to protect us, I think, because we're owned commercial. There's our issue and there's just no way, I don't know how we would ever change that. So being a homeowner over there, I realize that some things you cannot fight. So one of our neighbors just recently sold their home. We had hoped that it was going to go to the private, be an actual family. But I'm pretty sure it's going to be another Airbnb. And I do know that we have an investor in our neighborhood whose intent is to own every property over there and turn them all to Airbnbs. And every single time anybody even hints that they might have a health issue and be leaving, he runs over on the altar and makes sure that they have his name and number, contact information. And can he tour their home? And maybe they might go and sell to him. So possibly is aggressively trying to buy everything on our street, which is fine.
Yeah, I would mention the noticement forward. How many units are there?
Well, we currently have one, two, three, four units that are actually Airbnb. That are actually actively Airbnb is right now, four of them. Out of what we have thirteen houses. So we have one, another one that may be going in, that'll give us five. And it seems like every property that sells, they do go to Airbnb and they are investors. That's the thing. See, that's the problem we have because it's investors that are moving in. That's where it is everywhere. And the housing bubble may burst and we may be just where we were in two thousand and five. This was the warning signs in two thousand and five, it's all been happening again. By two thousand and eight, look what we had. It's coming. I just don't know why it hasn't happened yet. But it is coming, something is coming. And we are going to have a problem. So as much as I love my home, I might go out there. Another option that may be to our city and our heiress office would be that we put moratorium on Airbnbs. We find out how many we actually have here. We find out where they're located at. And in the future, we limit them to only being allowed in commercial zoned properties that are already here. That doesn't make us happy. But in the future, if they're only limited to the commercial zoned areas, it would give you a much better control. You could provide, perhaps you could provide parking for, you know, extra parking for that neighborhood. There's parking that used to be available behind, where there used to be a laundromat somewhere up there. There's parking that used to be there. That'll be a much better location for those boats and trailers and having them parked on both sides of the street, which we have experienced because it is a safety issue. If there were ever a fight. If there were ever a fire, there, it's not every weekend, and it's not every day, but there have been weekends where every inch of the street on both sides has been taken up by vehicles, and there wasn't only room enough for a regular-sized vehicle to fit between them. And we've got people parking up on the sidewalks to make the room. That's gonna destroy the sidewalks, they're not made to hold trucks.
Bob, there's not any charge to park a boat down here, right?
No, not yet.
Well, what they should, see, and there's a good point, but that's the thing, perhaps that's what we need to do, is get ahead of the parking thing, especially for trailers and things. Maybe, once we move out of our home, and that should be zoned, it can't be just a home anymore, maybe it has to be just an Airbnb, or it has to be just a business. Maybe it shouldn't be allowed to be residential, but we've got all, that's the battle we're gonna have. Our street is the biggest mosque we have out here, but I'd rather sacrifice that one street. I mean, yes, I don't wanna have to move right away, but if I knew that when I moved, that all it could be there was B and B, we would advertise that all it could be was a business, that all it could be was a B and B. At least we preserve the rest of the community, because that's where we're at, guys. It's gonna be a mess. I mean, I know we've been real lucky so far, but there is a housing bubble, this, you know, this was a big mistake lowering mortgage rates, I thought was, you know, they gotta lower the credit card rates a lot better than lowering the interest rates on mortgages, but this is where we're at. What we really need, if you're gonna preserve the integrity of Holiday Island, you're gonna have to have something, real ordinances, think through, make sure that you can't have people fight and find loopholes about it, be real considerate about it, and take a firm stand, and have, and have heavy fines. If you wanna be sneaky about things and we bust on you, guess what? All the money you made this past year that you've been acting illegally, guess what? You just forfeited it. And find a way to legally do it, because people need to be held responsible, and we're gonna get more and more in the future. We have maybe a lot of responsible people now, but let me tell you, it could change in five years, ten years.
Or a decade.
Yeah, it's already changing, but it could get nastier. So it's just something, you know, like I say, if it helps the community where we've already got things zoned commercial, it's zoned commercial, this is where you put it. We can't put it here, and guess what? Go somewhere else and put a B and B somewhere.
The problem is that the Supreme Court has already determined that you can't limit the VRBOs or Airbnbs to commercially zoned property. So we don't, can't even pursue that option. We basically, there's really no place in Holiday Island where they couldn't topple them.
Well, they get parking.
I mean, yeah, we can regulate parking.
There are things we can do.
My name is Bonnie Gibson. I'm one of the non-residential owners here. I live outside Kansas City. Like yourself, my wife and I came here a number of years ago on Airbnb, vacation, we liked the area. We came another time or two and started actually discussing maybe buying some property in the area. And we looked around Beaver Lake, Eureka Springs, just a general area, which we found the property here that I purchased. I've owned it for three years now, and I purchased a lot next to me that they do. I've never rented a house, but again, we're the type of people that, we're here once a month, sometimes three or four times a month, but my hunt is for a weekend, so we're not full-time residents that are contributing to your sale tax and things like that. The reason I'm here is because I have contemplated renting my house. We're planning on retiring here and maybe buying some more properties in the future for some passive income. Doesn't necessarily have to be here in Holiday Island, there's other communities that, you know, use our property anyway. I do have currently, I own a renovation business, so we do a lot of home renovation. I've flipped a lot of houses in the past, so I'm somewhat familiar with real estate. I do have some long-term rentals back home, and I have, I just don't have time a lot of times, so I've got some management people set up to handle some of that for me. But the main reason, I wanna bring up a few things that I see that in short-term rental could be beneficial, in other words, not only myself, but to the community. If I become a full-time resident here, you know, I may rent a boat once or twice a year, I may never rent a boat. I feel like vacationers are gonna rent boats, maybe not every vacationer, but they're gonna rent boats all summer long. And that's just one example. They're gonna go out and eat more often than a typical resident does. They're gonna spend money in the community, in other words. I and my family rent a lot of VRBOs when we go on vacations. We got side-by-sides that we ride, so we trailer our side-by-sides, rent a house, and go on vacation. And we rented anything from five thousand dollar a week houses to, you know, just a little one-bedroom house, a hundred bucks a night. So we've been staying in all kinds of different houses. So I'm somewhat familiar with that. But some of the benefit, other benefits I see, other than people spending money, is the owners of the property seem to take a little bit better care of their property than some of the neighbors, not all of them by any means, because, just like this community, there's a lot of homes that are immaculate and beautiful homes, but there are some homes that are trashy. And you can go back in the community and find a lot of few trashy homes that are off of the golf course area, off of the island area. And I've seen some of those homes been transformed into VRBOs. Whoever bought them came in, fixed the property up, updated it, make it look nice. And if you're gonna be a VRB owner, you have to keep your property up, you have to have people there that can take care of any type of problems that arise. You have to have a nice property, people are gonna rent it. And as an owner, you want, or a mouth, to generate more business for you so that you don't have to depend just on people going online to find your property. I see a lot of these properties here, and not only here, small towns all across the country, these small houses, these trailer homes, they don't have basements, they don't have garages, they have very limited space to store things. So these renters come in, long-term renters, and they bring all their clutter with them. And next thing you know, all on the outside of the house, you've got clutter, it's all over the backyard, it's wherever they wanna put it. The VRB renters don't bring any clutter with them. They may leave a little trash, but it's up to the owner, they have trash service greatly available, so that not only is it kept up, but it's ready for the next occupancy. So there's some things that I wanna bring up that could be beneficial as far as the white reserve areas, as far as generating extra money. I know you're talking about doing some taxing and things, but I think that if the VRB market is thriving, I think you'll find people who'll spend money in the community, and maybe the reason you haven't seen that is because you don't have that money in the area. As you said, I think you identified seven on the island. So, and I'm not saying that's a small number, but...
Well, that was on a given day in September.
Okay, that's fine, maybe I misunderstood. But my point is, is these people are here to spend money, and they don't let money on their vacation dictate the way they're gonna live their vacation. Most of these people that come to these properties have money, and so they're gonna spend it and enjoy their time. And, you know, as a property owner, I still feel like I'm contributing just due to the fact that I'm paying taxes. Now, I might not be here on a daily basis, but if I were to rent that property out, there would be somebody here on a daily basis spending money. And I would like to think that, I'm not even sure that I'm gonna do this, to be honest with you, but I am interested, and that's why I'm here. But I would like to think that any decisions that are made, whether I do it or not, are gonna be based on factual evidence and not anecdotal evidence, because you've always got people in the community that have nothing better to do but try to pick apart every little thing they see. And, you know, I don't know if that's a problem for you all, but like I say, I don't have any problems with my rental properties, I've never had a problem with renting a VRBO. You all advertise people come on vacation here, and yet, a lot of times, there's nowhere you can't book anything, there's nowhere to book. So you're missing out on those people when there's no place to book, and in fact, that's one of the reasons that interests me in this, because we've done this for years now, and every time we go to book something, doesn't matter whether it's in Colorado, doesn't matter whether it's here, we just made a trip to the Watchtower Mountains here about a month ago, we've been to South Dakota, I mean, we go all over the place. If you don't book it in January, February, you're not gonna find it. So, the availability of these homes goes really fast, and the fact that they're filled, filled up advance means the rest of the remainder of that year, there's people wanting to travel here if they can't.
We're not trying to ban them or anything, but there's some, I mean, you say you've been to Airbnbs, VRBOs all across the country, but would it be fair to say that the majority of those situations have some kind of bare minimum regulations on occupancy, parking, noise?
That is all regulated by each different community. And in most cases, the owner does not convey what the city wants, but they do set rules. There's usually either in the guidelines on VRBO, or sometimes they'll leave like a guestbook or, you know, a housebook that's gonna give you some information on, you know, the operations of the house, but also some of the rules of the house, community parking, for example. Most of the time, owners do have that, because as an owner, you don't want, you don't wanna present a problem for yourself, you don't wanna manufacture a problem.
Well, I see, I think that's what our minimal regulations that we're gonna probably start out with would be to the benefit of the owner.
You know, I would have to agree with you that some of the regulations, you know, I don't know if they're absolutely necessary, but at the same time, you know, anybody that's doing a VRBO that's serious about it already has an LLC, and they already are a business. And obtaining a business license isn't that hard. And, you know, I would think that as far as fire code goes and stuff like that, as far as I'm concerned, if, I'm gonna put my house up for sale, it's gonna be ready, and there's gonna be no issues. The main reason is that I don't wanna be sued, so I'm gonna make sure that everything's up to code, I don't want any railing that's faulty, I don't want anything where somebody could have an accident. I also view it as, I want everything to be up to date, so that I'm in Kansas City four hours away, and I'm getting a phone call and say, hey, my air conditioning isn't working. Now, that being said, I have people in place that can take care of that, but the more I can limit the problems for myself that are all by hand. So, and I feel like, most owners probably feel the same way. You know, we all have our own lives to lead, and this is kind of a sideline thing, so we don't need a lot of problems from things that we've created for ourselves, in other words. And again, I understand some of your concerns, and I can see where it would be beneficial to have maybe some fire inspections and urines, so you can identify who's out there. But if you overly regulate, they're gonna disperate, and you're gonna quit getting the travelers coming in here. And the thing that I liked about it when we came here is, you can come in here and be peaceful, quiet, you don't have the hustle and bustle that's going on in Rook Springs, you don't have the traffic. You don't have to go to Rook Springs if you don't want to, in other words. You can enjoy this community, you can enjoy the lake, you can go enjoy Beaver Lake. That's another thing that intrigued me about this area, is it's not all about one particular thing, it's not all about the lake. People come here for a variety of reasons. And so you've got tourists that are coming here for the lake, you've got bikers that are riding for the area, you've got people coming to look at the leaves, you've got people coming in for different events. It's very diverse. So I think that, I feel like, there's no better area to draw from. And I feel like, in turn, you know, it's like Damon said, there's more money to be made in VRBOs as an owner, but there's also a lot more money going into the community just due to the fact that the people are spending their money, they're vacationing, you're not just cooking dinner at home and making money in life. So, just a few things I wanted to bring up that I felt like maybe, you know, benefit the community, the life in some of the areas, just people updating their homes, things of that nature. And Damon's right about property generating incomes. If you can prove that that generates income, it does increase the value of a home, which in turn recruits the value of your property. Now, I hear people, when I say that, because I renovate and flip houses in the past, and I hear people say, I don't want my property value to raise up. Well, I understand that, but your property value will never raise, I mean, your taxes go along with your property value, okay? So, you're not interested in your taxes doing that, but when you're ready to sell your house, you sure are interested in that property being as valuable as possible. So, maybe today, it's, you know, doesn't mean anything to you, that you never know what fire's gonna throw at you, and maybe tomorrow, you need to sell, and you need to get the most out of your property. Properties like this can actually have the community. So, you know, that's pretty much in a nutshell what I have to say. I'm an outsider, I've never been to one of your council meetings, but since I'm contemplating this, I was interested to see what y'all, you know, are discussing, and...
So what did you hear, the discernment?
Well, you know, basing things on anecdotal evidence, as far as I'm concerned, that's hearsay, that's not factual whatsoever. You know, talking about taxing, you know, and if it's, well, first of all, I feel like you should know the laws if you're contemplating taxing people. So you should know what you can and can't do before you actually spend a bunch of time and energy towards that, and then find out that, hey, somebody hired a lawyer, and now we got lawsuit, and we can't actually do this. And I'm sure Holiday Island has their own lawyer that will go with things like that before it happens. But, you know, I guess in a nutshell, if you overly regulate, it's gonna drive property owners away, which will...
We understand that, and I think several of us have said that, the minimal regulations...
I agree, and I was glad to hear that, I really was. And I was glad to hear you say that. I don't get phone calls every day, you know? I'd be glad to hear people be truthful about their own experiences, you know? I'm just saying that I would really hope that it would be based on factual evidence, you know?
I think it will, and the only thing I disagree with you is man, no evidence. I think you've got two people that live in the same neighborhood, a very kind of tight neighborhood, there are three Airbnbs, so there, you know, there's some validity to, you know...
I understand that. When I heard them say that, it was that they were having a problem.
Well, I think we disagree, they're talking about two different properties.
Okay, well, I am misunderstood, and I'm not saying that, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, I'm just saying, my opinion is that as a whole, you know, you're always gonna have an exception, your daughter's gonna have a problem child-type thing, but as a whole, I really think community benefits. And, you know, as far as I'm concerned, whether I do it here or somewhere else, makes no difference to me. But I enjoy this community, I'm saying, I'm planning on moving here at some point in the next few years, so I just wanted to throw that out there and kind of give you a perspective of maybe some of the things that might help out a little bit, so. That's pretty much all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of comments to follow up on what you said that I made note of here that I thought was right on the line. One is that absentee landlords who own property, you know, short or long-term rentals, and as long as they get their rent check in the mail every month, they may have never even been to Holiday Island, but as long as they get their rent check in the mail every month, they don't care what the property looks like, and they're not gonna put a nickel into it until they absolutely have... And, and they're not gonna put a nickel into it until they absolutely have to. We have a much, much bigger problem in Holiday Island with that, much bigger problem than-
Yeah, that's true.
Than we do with VRBO owners. Because I've, I've read articles about neighborhoods in larger cities that were, for all practical purposes abandoned, you know, kind of derelict neighborhoods. The people went in, they, they bought, you know, they bought the property cheap so they were able to put, put money into them and fix them up and turn them into VRBOs and then turn the derelict neighborhood into a, you know, a nice property, a nice, nice comfortable neighborhood. So, I thought that was a good point. Something that, you know, when you live someplace, you never really think about it, but we talk a lot about advertising and promoting Holiday Island as a vacation place. And yet, we don't have a clue what our inventory of vacation property is, you know, for people. What if we spent, you know, a hundred thousand dollars advertising Holiday Island as a vacation place and then found out there's only two houses in Holiday Island that somebody could rent if they did come here? So, it, you know, I think-
There's thousands of vacant lots they can buy.
Yeah, that's, but, you know, aside, aside benefit of this, of finding out where the short-term rental property is, is that we'll, we'll have an idea of what the inventory of properties are that we're targeting to market.
Just a two, two second thing I forgot to throw out when I was at the podium. We all need to be aware too that there's a cultural evolution going on as far as where people stay when they travel. And I know we have children that are in their thirties and forties. They wouldn't even consider checking into a Hilton or a Holiday Inn, you know? They, they go online and look up VRBO. And it, it's a big change, and I, I've read articles of how this has affected the business model that, you know, Best Western, Holiday Inn, all these big hotel companies, they got rooms set empty because the Gen X and all these younger generations are choosing to stay in these short-term rentals. So, we need to get part of that.
My daughter just moved to Colorado, is very much the same way. But do your kids, they don't factor in that there's a regulation that the owner, that the VRBO have a business license or has been inspected? I mean, that's not deterring, Damon, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that's not deterring anybody from renting any of these properties.
No, you would never know.
Never know.
Thanks. You know, what you're saying about the impact of the VRBOs on the traditional lodging, that was in that steamboat spring that everybody go on the Democratic is that one of the, the travel lodge or something like that converted all their rooms into apartments for people that work in town to live in. Because nobody was renting the hotel rooms anymore, they just, they were all renting-
There were two in Eureka.
Yeah, I own Eureka Suites. That was, this, this is, that was 2013 that provided lodging. And we provided things out of the motel, so it's been going on a long time.
Anyway, good, good input. And I think another thing that kind of came out of this with our HISA representative here is that as, you know, assuming that the vacation economy is gonna continue to be an important part of our economy and probably even grow, I, I don't think there's any doubt right now that the, that, that HISA amenities are benefiting financially from the, from rental property. I live on the golf course, and early in the morning, I see people going through playing golf that I know. The rest of the day, the people I've never seen before and will never see again.
All people I know are around seventy and over. Now, get up for him.
Yeah.
You're on the wrong side of the, wrong side of number five for me. I'm always on the other side.
But with that said, with that said, we need to understand now, there's, there's no issue with capacity on golf courses. But with that, you know, with that said,
We need that.
If we're going to have a business model for the community to grow the vacation market, to grow that economy for Holiday Island. And if an important element of that is that the people come here to use the amenities, we have to understand that the amenities here were basically built by HISA, by the homeowners, for the homeowners. And if that is gonna transition into a more broad, you know, economy as far as market, you know, customers, you know, we, we need to understand that, that it needs to be part of the plan. So, you know, in a normal city, the, you know, the pools would be public and stuff like that, so it's not necessarily the same kind of problem. Okay, that, that's, that was, that took away from the last half hour.
The only thing I wanted to add to the comment we were talking about, the elements. I think Bluewater Drive is one of the best examples of what you were pointing out of improvements in buildings. If you went to Bluewater Drive eight years ago, you'd think that that, there may not be anybody's desire to drive down it. If you look at the number of rentals on Bluewater Drive now, it's unbelievably high. It's one of the better improvement areas of Holiday Island that I've seen across the entire of this region.
I have something.
You have to come to the podium.
Just in front of me.
Mandatory, it'll be those out.
We have Jeanette Selleck, twenty-two bucks in lane. I live kitty-corner across from the pool, and I go there frequently. Probably from here, I'm probably the person that's here who knows more about the pool than even, oh, not James, but anyway. So, last year was when they had a block and how many could go for COVID. That was the problem. It wasn't because the pool was totally full of people. They regulated how many could go in. So, if the first ones that came were from the Airbnb, they were in first before the homeowners. This year, there is no regulation on the percentage that can be there, and there's not a lot of people there. Because the Airbnb people have to deal with somebody else, and they're using somebody else's pool. We've lost the, I don't know what it cost last year, five or six dollars for them to get in. This year, it's nine dollars. They're not getting that money. They lost that money. And we lost the six hundred dollars. They paid three hundred dollars to somebody else. But anyway, so, I don't think the Airbnbs were taking over the pool except for the percentage that could be there during COVID.
I might just say real quick in regards to the pool, because I do keep up a little bit on what I know about here, just online. But in, in regards to the pool, I'm not a pool guy. And I never have had pool passes, but I can tell you that your pool rates are extravagant compared to some of the nicest communities we have in Kansas City. Our pool passes up there in some of the best, nicest communities are a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars a, a year for a family. And you're at six hundred dollars, and I would think that that would not only chase away the, the tourists, but probably some of the residents. Again, I'm not a pool guy, it's your business, you whatever.
Property owner receives a passage for the pool or is higher.
I'm just saying that six hundred dollars is extremely high.
I think it's, it's a hundred and some dollars.
Yeah, by a hundred and fifty dollars for a family pass for property.
Yeah, that's the way it is up there, but six hundred dollars is-
That's strictly for a VRBO type setup.
That's fine, but you just lost all the money, not just some. Just make one comment. Yeah, since you're, we, we don't want to throw this into a pool meeting, but I did want you to, very importantly, a, a, a piece of that puzzle is I have owners that have five-bedroom houses, three-bedroom houses, one-bedroom house. There's one six hundred dollar fee. The person who brings couples into town, that makes no sense whatsoever for them to pay a six hundred dollar fee. And that's probably more likely the nice pool people, because I get what you're saying about the pool of, oh, okay, there's a, there's a, there's a house here that sleeps like twenty-two. If that family knows the pool, they'll run in the pool, they might have kids, whatever else. But that's, I, I don't know how to separate out who pays the six hundred and who doesn't. I would rather it just be a flat fee that I can pass on to the guests and still have some income generation. And I would raise my hand and support that all day long. But for the one six hundred dollars, it just is limiting to the people who-
Turn the podium around, it's a dress box.
Brings it to the wrong part. Again, I have to admit, it may have been a knee-jerk response. I think you got it, yeah, we'll continue to work on it.
Steve Crowell, horseshoe drive. I'm only gonna take a second, but the smartest thing I've heard said here today was what the mayor said. They're gonna come up with a regulation. But if you're gonna come up with a regulation, you need to have a goal in mind, you need to have a problem to try and fix, not just a place to create revenue. And that's what this sounds like to me. Because I haven't heard a thing brought up here today that couldn't be taken care of by other ordinances, and most of them are already in place or will be when we get our code enforcement stuff up and going. Trash, noise, we've got ordinances on noise, do we not?
Not yet.
And it applies to me. Now, I've got, I've got a VRBO right in the backyard. And, and I'll agree with what he says. People that have VRBOs take better care of them than most long-term renters. My grandson mows the grass on two of them. And they don't even come and look at it. They tell him, if it looks worse than anybody's yard in that neighborhood, you get in there and coat. And send us a bill. They want that place looking nice. They don't want people coming in for the weekend and grass growing over the driveway and the fire beds covered up. They take care of it. But all these things that we're talking about, parking, we, we've all got order, there's ordinances, and if there's not, we can create one with parking. And so, I'm looking for the, I'm trying to find that the two words that scare me most is control and regulate. The libertarian blood in me just boils down to control and regulate. Okay? There's such thing as homeowner rights, property owners have rights. And if they're not impeding my safety or my health and welfare, it's not much my business what they do. And you talk about regulating occupancy and fire codes and all that, but if what this gentleman says is right, you can't control occupancy if it's considered a residential property. If it's not commercial, none of that stuff applies. And I'm not even sure fire code applies. You can't come in my house and tell me how many fire detectors, smoke detectors I've gotta have. You can recommend, your fire department can come and say, you know, Steve, these guys ought to have this, this, and this. But you can't come in my house and tell me how many smoke detectors.
But if you're building a new house, they'll tell you how many you have to have.
Possibly. If that, if that's the law.
That's the Arkansas law.
But once, once it's done, it's done. You ain't gonna come check my batteries. I mean, you know, some of it's personal responsibility. And this idea of licensing, for what, what is the purpose? Just so you can tell how many you got? Now, that's, that's legitimate, but license, what, so you charge fifty bucks? You can find that out without charging. There's no need for a license. Let's don't go over regulate. Let's don't make a mountain out of a raptor. If we've got problems, let's solve them. But let's, let's don't get in all this overregulation and fees and stuff. That's just my two cents.
Okay.
My secret.
Come on up.
I have a question. I understood, and I didn't hear a little, something about the manufactured homes and local homes being a problem, is that? Did I understand that correctly?
I was wondering. It's never been discussed.
Too much noise, I'm sorry.
Well, we didn't, they don't tell you anything specific about mobile homes or anything.
Well, I, I was asking because that's what I understood someone to say on the regulations or whatever, something about the manufactured homes or local homes.
No, ma'am.
Okay, that was-
Well, it hadn't been brought up in this.
It's nothing to do with-
Oh, it's my misunderstanding, because thinking on that, where I live, we are mostly, I take with the exception of maybe ten homes that are built. We are all local homes, well, well, manufactured homes. We choose in our area to keep it as natural as we possibly can because of the actual beauty out there, and we have a lot of deer and a lot of animals coming in that area out there, and they're a pleasure to see. We don't, we don't have a lot of area to grow plants, and if we did, the deer would eat them up. So, we, we do a lot of container growing, if you will, a lot of plants or flowers grow in the containers. And, you know, when, when I, oh, I heard this manufacturing and local home thing, I thought, oh, God, they could have, could have ruled against, we can't have that anymore. I'm gonna have to fit.
No, we don't. We haven't even discussed.
I want, well, I wanted to be clear myself with my mind that this was not one of those things that was gonna happen.
No.
But if you, if you, yeah, if you come out and you drive down that street, you may see some homes that are old and that have not kept up, but the yards are clean. There's no trash. The, the trash cans are appropriately set where they should be. Mine stays out by the lawn because it's easier for me to take my trash down and pull the cart up, put the trash in it, or cart down. It's too heavy, I can't do it. But I, I'm just more concerned about the landscape part that we have out there.
All we're talking about here today is vacation rentals.
Okay.
It's got nothing to do with what you're talking about.
Vacation rentals, as far as I know, out there, unless someone's just open one. Okay, thank you.
All right, well, I think I'm gonna cut this off. We'll try to write up, as we've been taking minutes, BJ's been on, oh, taking minutes. So, we'll try to write up a summary of this and maybe come up with some action item, uh, bullets to, to follow up with.
Yeah.
Okay? Well? Any other comments from the council? If not, we don't need a motion to adjourn, we just adjourn. Thank y'all for coming.